And the critical functions that elected board members play in our communities. The Spooner Area School District joins the other 420 public school districts across the state to celebrate Wisconsin School Board Week and honor our local board members for their commitment to their communities and students. We thank each of you for your service to children, families, staff, and the community. Serving as a school board member is not always easy or pleasant, however, your commitment to service always matters. So please join me in a round of applause for our school board members. Thank you. (applause) All right. You're about one minute out here. Yeah. I like this. It's, you're about one minute out here. Yeah. I like this. Would it be appropriate to have a moment to silence these kids?
If you'd like it.
Yeah, of course.
Nice.
You can do whatever you want, my fad.
Very bruised. There is no sign up for community comments this evening. It's raise a hand and be recognized. Yep, I'll be stating that. Yep, I'll be stating that before the meeting. I just want them knowing, thinking about them.
Right, it is 3:31.
Okay. All right. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Monday, October 4th, 2021. Members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have a roll call, please, Jessie?
Can we ask this thing?
Present.
President.
President.
Michelle Jackson.
President.
Ms. Danielle Melvin.
Here.
Here.
Marsha Scherz.
Here.
Paul Johnson.
Here.
All right. And we're moving on to item C, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. All right, we're moving on to item two, our two presentations. Item A, student, staff, and community recognition. We have one recognition before you this evening. Recommending administrator is Mr. Scherz and Lisa Salo. Mrs. Salo not here? Okay. Mrs. Salo did a great job covering the high school office over the past two weeks. She was the only one in the office due to our recent COVID experiences. She was always friendly and helpful. She helped us operate smoothly during some difficult times. Thank you to Mrs. Salo. If we could have a round of applause, please.
(applause)
All right. We're moving forward to item B, the referendum project update. Brad Kunkel from CSATEN.
Good evening. Like to provide a brief monthly update for construction projects. For air conditioning at the elementary school, last month's been testing the lines, filling them with glycol, cleaning out the pipes beforehand. Starting tomorrow, we will be turning on the chiller startup. Will be no disturbance for kids within the facility. Flooring replacement, we did have a delay on the balance of materials. Starting not this coming weekend, but next weekend, we'll be working with the flooring installer on available weekends to complete that balance. For the north parking lot, we currently have a binder course down outside of the construction area. Going to be looking at doing a finish course at the middle of this month, just to eliminate some of the pounding issues that are taking place. For the addition, block work should be complete tomorrow. Structural steel, including joist and decking, is going to arrive next week. So we're on pace for hopefully installing the joist and decking next week, or next week going into the following week. For bleachers, the installation on that started today, should be complete by Thursday morning at the latest. Then for playground equipment, we decided to move forward a little quicker than anticipated for making an order. Our vendor reached out to us, let us know that there was a one-for-one price match on playground equipment that applied. So this week we'll be submitting a grant for the elementary and middle schools. For the addition over at the middle school, we got a majority of the documentation we needed back from the architect and structural engineer, looking for a few clarifications, but won't disrupt work over the next few weeks. Over the last month, we have dug the trenches for foundations, made final cuts, and then poured the footings. Starting this week, we'll start to lay the foundation and hopefully be able to make up some pace for the structural steel, joist, and decking that'll be arriving next week as well for that facility. Roofing replacement is complete. The Antholz Gym Flooring Replacement, that is also complete. Bleachers are installed, currently working on furring out the walls. For interior lighting upgrade, we have a majority of the materials. There's some occupancy sensors that are now getting pushed out till basically next fall. So looking at some options there for some products that are currently available. One additional project we're doing is at the Antholz Gym, installing snow guards. There's been an issue at the West Drive where there's been ice and snow that has made it pretty dangerous for people to go through that area. So that work started last week, hoping to be complete with that by the end of next week. For the emergency generator, startup for that is going to take place October 16th. And then additional project we're also doing is installing door alerts, facility-wide. High school is 99% complete, just need to have someone come in, do some additional programming. Middle school will start next week, then move to the elementary. That work is expected to be complete at the end of this month. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Kunkel? And just to make a note, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kunkel regarding the construction project furniture purchase that is action item? As long as Mr. Kunkel is here, if you have any of those questions, this would be the time to ask. No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll receive and place this information on file. All right, we're moving on to item C, update from the district nurse, Mrs. Hamilton.
Do you want me just to go over the information I submitted?
If you would please, yes.
I can do that. So this was last updated on Friday. As of Friday, we still are sitting at 108 total cases, 80 student cases, 28 staff cases. We're down to 15 active cases. So active cases are people who cannot be in the building because they're within their 10 days of being diagnosed with COVID. So that number continues to improve. I noted that during the 2021 school year, there were 98 total cases, 76 students, and 22 staff. The September 2021 total for students excluded due to a close contact to a positive at school is 418. Your September 2020 total was 22. Of note, in September 2020, you had only three students test positive and zero staff. And in September 2021, you had 80 students test positive and 28 staff test positive, hence the much higher exclusion numbers. 43 students were excluded due to a close contact in the community in September 21. So that is students not excluded due to a close contact at school. That means a parent, a guardian, someone they're in close contact with in the community tested positive. In comparison, in September 2020, those numbers were also significantly lower at seven. Same goes for staff exclusions. So at the bottom, you see total exclusions. And when we talk about total exclusions, that's close contacts due to at school, in the community, testing positive, and then students who are symptomatic and are waiting for test results, or parents are keeping them home rather than having them get tested. So they want to keep them home for the 10 days due to symptoms. So in September 21, you had 891 people. Keep in mind, there's a couple people in there, you might be counted twice as an exclusion if you were sick at the beginning of September and then sick at the end of September because you were excluded twice. September 2020, you had 162 exclusions. Most recent updates for schools, if you look at the numbers from last week, we can see they continue to improve throughout the week. As of Friday, two 4K, 28 kindergarten, 16 first, 17 second grade, four third grade, 18 fourth grade, 83 total at the elementary school, significantly decreased from 217 on 9/27. 15 fifth grade, five seventh grade, 18 seventh grade, 27 ninth grade, for a total of 65 at the middle school on Friday, once again significantly decreased from previous numbers. Six ninth grade, 10, I'll get it, I put my numbers there. Six ninth grade, four 10th grade, 19 11th grade, 16 12th grade, for a total of 45 at the high school, once again decreased from 82 on 9/27. Staff out would have been eight at that time, significantly decreased from 18. So 203 total as of Friday. Total positive student cases at the elementary school to date in the month of September, 48. Middle school, 18. High school, 12. Alt school, 2. I had a great question come from a community member, and so we are going to clarify the definition of a case. I had a parent who called and was wondering if her student who was out while ill is counted as a case. She very respectfully asked that question and explained what she had understood that answer to be. And so I was able to clarify, and I'm going to clarify it for all, that a case is an individual who has tested positive for COVID-19. Cases are not students who are out sick. They have to have had a positive test results. An individual with symptoms but no lab test is never considered a case. All cases counted to date in the Spooner Area School District, 108 have had a positive lab results. And then I had another question, do we receive funding for COVID-19 cases? There's some confusion because when hospitals bill, they bill based on billing codes, and there's various billing codes. We don't bill for COVID cases, and we certainly don't get reimbursed any money for having COVID cases at the school. Anything else?
Any questions for Mrs. Hamilton?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is we have mandatory masks in the middle school and the elementary school. So if, and what is the distance we're using then in those buildings?
Sure. So the health department, as you saw in Sherri Nichols' email a couple weeks ago, said that within three feet, so closer than three feet would be considered a close contact. Essentially, the health department said as long as we have students wearing masks, we're not going to need to exclude them.
Okay. And then in the high school, how does that work?
The high school is still at six feet because masks are not required at the high school.
But if an individual's wearing a mask, would, how does that work?
Yep, we went over this last year. It's the same thing. So, no, I'll go, I'll explain it to you. So last year, the same as this year, since we don't require masks and there's absolutely no way I can verify if students are wearing them if there's no requirement, we aren't taking that into account. That would fall on the teachers to determine if all the students in their classroom were wearing masks. And that was something that it was determined really wasn't fair to the teachers to make them the mask police.
So one other question. So let's say in the high school, somebody is COVID, and you need to check that distance between desks, let's say. How does that take place? Are you actually taking a tape to determine that?
Yep. We take a tape measure, and we measure it generally with the teacher in the room in case their seating chart is not accurate. And if they're six feet, two inches, they don't get excluded.
But six foot one, they would?
Well, over six feet, yeah, sorry. So anything over six feet.
Okay. And then do you ever do that in front of kids?
Actually, we ask the students to leave the room when we do that, so that it, they're not watching that process, because that's just not fair to anyone.
Can I ask something? Is the seating start chart static for the high school especially, or are kids rotating throughout?
Yep. So teachers are expected to have a seating chart in place and use their seating chart.
So in your opinion then, with the numbers you just said, we're trending in the positive direction?
I guess I wouldn't use the word opinion. I'm just going to let you know the numbers are clearly trending down.
Trending down, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mrs. Hamilton? Can you come forward to the mic, please? And please state your name.
My name's Andrew Melton, and just clarification, because those numbers are going through pretty fast. So as of right now, we have 108.
Can I ask him to address the board, please?
Sure. As right now. He can ask a question.
He can ask Mrs. Hamilton a question. That is.
Yeah. Case. But from 108, we've had 891 students missing school.
From 108, we've had 198 close contacts.
Okay. What was the 891 then?
So total exclusions, we've got students who are symptomatic, who are close contacts or have COVID. Does anyone who may be elderly, not because they were close contacts, have COVID cases?
So if a kid at school has a symptom, so they have a cough, are they allowed to come to school though?
So I refer you to that, see that school.
So they haven't been tested positive, but they've been asked to stay home because they have a cough, because that's the number one symptom. So if they have two symptoms, they have to stay home. If you have one, if you have a cough, you have to stay home. But you're saying we're still not counting that as part of the 491?
Total exclusions, but not in close contact.
Right. So there's been 891 kids missing school. And it could be the same kid twice, or three times.
If it's someone who's like, well, on Friday, that's on Friday, you have an ER, that's 100.
Right. Correct. But that's, that's a lot of missing school and students out of 108. And right now, we have 15 active cases. So out of 15 students right now have positive case, they're within their 10 days. Okay. So my other question then is, if somebody is vaccinated, is it still possible for them to have COVID?
Yes.
So if somebody is vaccinated, do they have to quarantine?
So why is that, we, you, you, you're something, you're something?
I can't hear her.
No, I understand. I just want to clarify. So if somebody's vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine, but yet they could still have it. So they could still transfer to others. But if somebody's tested positive for COVID, is it possible for them to get it again?
Okay. Do you have any?
If somebody's tested positive for COVID in the past, is it possible for them to crack it again?
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
So the way, so once again, I've got to refer you back to the procedure. And it's the same.
I know the procedure. I just want to know, if you're positive, can you get it again?
So the procedure that we follow from the health department says that you do not need to, that you would not be considered to be able to get it again in the next 90 days. So you essentially, once you've had it once, for the next 90 days, we wouldn't quarantine someone. We wouldn't, we're much, much more lenient on not excluding them from school if they have a symptom. So a positive test result, the way we explain it to parents, is similar to what a vaccination would do for someone for 90 days. Does that make sense?
Right, for 90 days. But after 90 days, they still would have to quarantine.
Yeah. And that's not my choice. That's the DHS and CDC protocol that we are following. So that's what I follow.
It's the DHS, it's their recommendation.
It's not.
Correct. Yeah. Is that it?
Did you have something to say, Ms.?
No, I'm just, I'm just, are you?
I'm asking for clarification. So I guess I'm having a hard time understanding, if somebody has been vaccinated, they can still test positive. But yet if somebody's had COVID, and it's been past nine days, they still have to quarantine, even though they can still get it, Bowles could still get it, Bowles can still transfer it.
So that's something I would say you should address with the health department, because the written procedure that we follow is what I just explained to you.
Right. I just wanted to clarify, make sure that's, that's true. So that's why when we get to the next topic, we'll quarantine, and I'm going to ask for clarification from the board on that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Okay. Okay.
Ms. Hamilton, one question. So you just talked about that we follow what is being said by the health department and the county. Are those requirements by the health department, or are those just recommendations and suggestions?
So, gosh, I guess if you, I'm, when you read the DPI and the DHS guidance, you say that it is written as a recommendation. So I'm sure when you've read that, you've seen that.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
I wish to ask a question, if I could.
Yes.
I believe the question was, if a person, what you were being asked was, if a person has had COVID, can they get COVID again?
Yes.
And I believe that the answer you said was yes. And is it also yes because there's other variants of the original COVID-19 out there, and it's mutating?
Yes.
Because we're not getting it under control? Would that be the correct answer?
Yes, that's correct. We've had people test positive twice, not within 90 days.
So there's different variants out there that we still should be protected from?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I think, is there any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hamilton. All right. We're going to move on to item D, which is the district-wide operational update. Dr. Aslan?
So this is something new that we, we brought forward for this meeting agenda, to provide you with additional information. And as it relates to our staffing at this time, so when you look at the time period, late last week, so following our meeting last week through midweek this week, some, some good news for staff that are going to be able to return for duty. So in the elementary school, you either have had or will have in the coming days eight teachers back to school. So that's positive, in addition to six support staff that will be back. And we know that the elementary, last week was the, the building that really was struggling with the ability to staff. In the high school, you have three teachers returning, or have returned, and three support staff. So again, positive trajectory on that. In addition, you have one CLC program worker, that's the before-after-school program, that'll be able to return to work here, and two, two teacher subs that are able to return back to service during that time as well. So again, just some new information, or a new format, a new report, I should say. Are there questions for me on that information?
Any questions for Dr. Aslan regarding that information? Thank you very much for that. And we're going to move on to item E, the district Third Friday pupil count report. Dr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. So a couple of documents that I'm going to refer you to. The first one is the, the roll-up report comparison summary on board docs. In that, you'll see September Third Friday count, September 2020, 1,189 students. Adjusted Third Friday count on the Third Friday, September 2021, 1,227. So net increase of 38 students. I'll refer you in hard copy to a document that was in front of you this evening, and please know that these numbers are not final, they're being calculated. But in that document, you would see that we have five fewer students open and enrolled in than we had at this time last year, and we have 11 more students open and enrolled out of the district that we had at this time last year. Terms of homeschooled students, and you'll, you'll see the note there, that homeschool enrollment deadline is not till the middle of this month. At this time last year, you had 110 students that lived in the district boundaries that were homeschooled. And Third Friday count this year, you have 54 students. And you can see on the back of your document, it gives you kind of a breakdown of open and roll out and open and roll in. Questions there?
Any questions?
On the board docs, so that graph there that says plus 38, or I know that's not official numbers, does that mean we're in the plus 38 on the, what's not on this paper, but on this comparison summary? Am I understanding?
That's correct, on the categories that are on the comparison summary. And so our, our pupil count that we report to the Department of Public Instruction after that Third Friday count in September, and the Second Friday count in January. So that's our Third Friday, September count, that's what we'll go forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Johnson?
Could I ask just one question would be, what is our role as a public school district towards students in our district that are homeschooled? And do we get any type of funding? Do we play a role in their schooling once they're homeschooled?
So parents that homeschool their children do have the ability to enroll their children in, in a limited amount of programming in the public school district? So things like band or physical education, classes that are hard to replicate in a homeschool environment would be examples of, of where students would participate. Homeschool parents are taxpayers. So they do pay property tax in terms of the district receiving other funding, or charging a homeschool family tuition for their child to attend? No.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you for that, and we're going to receive and place that information on file. All right, we're moving on to item F, discuss the substitute teacher pay rate. Dr. Aslan?
We are in the fourth year of the $110 per day short-term substitute pay rate. During the past couple weeks, we've received some different points of input from residents saying that that figure may be low enough, and it, it's comparable, it, it, the range in the area runs between $100 and $120. So we're kind of in the middle of that. But yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board to consider, let's see if we can really address this shortage that we've So, parents that homeschool their children do the ability to enroll their children in, in a limited amount of programming in the public school district. So, things like band or physical education, classes that are hard to replicate in a home-school environment, would be examples of, of where students would participate. Uh, home-school parents are taxpayers. So, they do pay property tax, uh, in terms of the district receiving other funding, uh, or charging a home-school family tuition for their child to attend, no.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Alright, thank you for that, and we're going to receive and place that information on file. Alright, we're moving on to item F, discuss the substitute teacher pay rate. Dr. Aslan?
We are in the fourth year of the $110 per day short-term substitute pay rate. Uh, during the past couple of weeks, we've received some, uh, different points of, uh, input from residents saying, uh, that that figure may, um, be low enough. And it, it, it's comparable, it, it, the range in the area runs between a hundred and, a hundred dollars and a hundred and twenty dollars. So we're kinda in the middle of that. But, uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board to consider, um, let's see if we can really address this shortage that we've experienced in the first week of school. And I'd ask you to consider, uh, increasing the, uh, daily rate for short-term subs to a hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, my, my recommendation would be that that run through June 30th, 2022.
Are there any questions for Dr. Aslan?
I, I am going to ask, I see that, uh, the proposal is through June of 2022. Is it possible, when we bring this to the board, we could just make it until further notice? Are we going to have to come back in June and readdress it, or would we just make it until further notice?
So, so our, our reasoning behind making it a temporary piece is, um, you know, it's, it's not a budgeted item for this year. We anticipate that we could, um, handle whatever may come from that. Honoring that figure beyond that, I think would call for some speculation financially, that we're just not in a position to make it this time.
So we may readdress it in June and take a look at the budget for the following year?
That, that's correct, and I think additionally, we just analyze what the impact was in terms of, you know, was that a piece that, that attracted substitutes to our district or not?
Are there any further questions? Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay. And if everybody, when I ask for consensus, if you could speak right into your microphone, so I see that everybody has said yes, that would be great. Alright, thank you. Alright. And we're moving on to item G, discuss the student requests for early college credit and start-college-now options. Mrs. Myers?
Barely hear you, Mrs. Myers.
There you go.
We have the request from our juniors and seniors who would like to take college classes for spring semester this year. Um, the state requirement is the October 1st deadline. Most of the colleges do not have their spring semester courses and schedules up. So we are estimating, picking classes, hoping that they'll offer these classes. Um, you can see where it says the district will pay however many credits. That doesn't mean the student will take that many this spring, it is just, that is how many credits they have left that we will pay for. Many of these students will only take one or two of these proposed classes.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mrs. Myers regarding these, um, students that are requesting, um, to take those college credits? And we remind everybody that the district, I believe, will pay up to eighteen credits, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright. And so, we're moving on to item H, um, review the parliamentary procedures. Um, we had supplied some really good information on Board Docs. I hope that everybody has got a chance to, um, look that over. Um, does anybody have any items you need clarified, or would like to discuss? Any of the items, um, shown on those, on that stuff that you received? Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody has had a chance to review those. And if you do have any questions, please reach out. And if we need some clarification on anything, we can certainly, um, look at that at a later date as well. Okay. Um, we're going to receive and place that information on file. Alright, we're moving on to item I, which is discuss the contact tracing and parental decision regarding quarantine. Um, Mrs. Jepson, you asked that this item be put on the agenda. Um, would you like to start?
I can. Um, I would like to have a change in our policy that we stop contact tracing and allow our parents to determine if they want their children to go home once they have been told that they've been near someone who had COVID positive. Um, many schools are doing it that way. Um, there is no requirement to have contact tracing, um, in any county, DHS, or CDC. Um, so that is why I asked for it to be done. Um, looking at all the schools in our area, um, I will say that Shelly Lake doesn't do it, Minang doesn't do it, Grantsburg doesn't do it, Webster doesn't do it, Rice Lake doesn't do it, Superior doesn't do it, Menominee doesn't do it. Hayward just approved not doing it, um, at their last board meeting. So, um-
Rice Lake does quarantine.
They quarantine, but not like that.
In Cameron.
Can you clarify, Mrs. Scherz, um, what they do, seeing that you are an employee of that district?
We have the three-tiered system, fourteen-day quarantine. For close contacts, there's the option to return after ten days with no symptoms, or, um, with a negative test at day six.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else? Go ahead, Dr. Aslan.
My understanding is that state statute, um, allows public health to enforce quarantines during an outbreak. Do you know, Dr. Aslan, that's my understanding of the statute? That that's the authority of public health?
So not an attorney certainly would not speak to the, the statute and what their authority is. I can tell you that that is what the law firm that represents our district has informed us.
Mrs. Myers, would you like to step up to the microphone, please, if you have a question?
Just a quick clarification, my son is enrolled at Northwood High School in Minang and just got off his quarantine, be- because he's a close contact, so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mrs. Olson, so I, I did just want to provide some information. I spoke with, uh, Hayward Superintendent this morning. So they are, they are still quarantining close contacts. They also have a, a, a committee of the whole meeting tonight, where they're having the same, uh, discussions and, and are considering that. I will, uh, I will tell you that, uh, here's the numbers that that superintendent provided this morning. Uh, total student positive cases to date, uh, this school year, twenty-four students, twenty-four cases coming from four family units, one staff positive case, and, uh, total seventy-six close contacts.
Thank you for that information.
So, there are several other schools that for sure are abandoning this other way of doing it, close contact tracing, that we are sure. I think that our community has spoken very loudly on what their wishes are. Also, looking at liability, liability would probably be in the fact that if you're not providing, just like any liability, my opinion would be, wouldn't that be, if you're not providing every opportunity for people to be safe? So in other words, if we didn't provide vaccine possibilities, mass mandate, or masks, having, uh, the lotion stuff that kills stuff, if you want a face shield, if you want to quarantine or not quarantine, that would be all giving people out. I, I, it's hard for me to see how we would be liable, just as other schools, I, it's hard to see how they would be liable. I'm not a lawyer either, and just, it would be a hard, I just see that as being the issue of the land right now, and the conflict that we're already seeing driving a lot of behaviors or i- i- in, in our society. I don't know how it'd be different for schools being one thing and workplaces doing another thing. Otherwise, everybody would be not working right now. So, it's hard for me to look at that as being the driving factor, when at the end of the day, the Health Department, everybody I talk to, the people I talk to, is a, it's a suggestion. It's a recommendation. And that's what I think people are having a hard time with, is that it's coming across as a mandates, and they're, that's not personally, as of my own opinion, as I read that, that's not how it reads. It's just a suggestion of what we can do, and that's why we have the issue of different schools doing different things, all within our area. So I think it's up to us as a board, if I understand that correctly, to decide that. It's up to the parents and community how they want to handle how we do or don't do. And I know it's a hard issue, it's not a fun issue. Just, just trying to make my point to clarify some things of how my research has been.
Mrs. Olson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it's somewhat rhetorical, and I don't know if anyone can address this now, but we, at one point tonight, we talked about seating arrangements and masking versus unmasking, the distances that provided. I'm just wondering if we had a static seating arrangement, um, for our elementary, middle school, and somehow did the cohort thing, is there, if there was, would be a meet in the middle? Because I know it is, uh, it's a difficult situation, and people are on both sides of the aisle. But I'm wondering if there's a, a way that can address multiple, multiple things here.
I think we all agree that we want to keep kids in school and avoid quarantines, so I think it's good to look at, at what our options are, keeping in mind the statutes and the advice of our legal advisors.
Also, if I can, I have two letters that I would like to read this evening, um, from staff members. And if you just bear with me, so I can read these out to everyone. The first one is, um, "Hi, Dr. Aslan, I spoke with Ms. Geisregan last week, and she suggested that I write down my thoughts in an email that could be shared, um, with the board. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to express my concerns over last week's board meeting and the recent talk of removing the quarantine practice from our schools. At last week's board meeting, you had a couple of staff members who stood up and proclaimed to speak on behalf of your staff. I can assure you that they do not speak for all of your staff. Just as the community is divided on this topic, you will find your staff to be as well. I am writing from the other side of the perspective. I am a high-risk staff member, mother of two students who attend our schools, and active member of the community. I fully support vaccinating, masking, and quarantining. Here is why we should not stop quarantine practices. We send students home every week whose parents send them to school to just try it and see if they can make it through the day, or whom have given their student meds to lower their fever, or make them feel better and allow them to attend, et cetera. So while it sounds good in theory to keep your students home if they are sick, it doesn't happen. Quarantining is one of the few things that you actually do currently to help protect high-risk staff. Students are not masking, and even when it is being mandated, staff that disagree with the mask mandate are not enforcing. So students definitely receive a mixed message. If you stop quarantine practices, I fear that you may lose some staff who are already not feeling safe in our building professions. You have staff that would love to speak up and have their voices heard, but are too afraid. Not afraid of losing their jobs or being reprimanded by their employer, but afraid of the parents and actions of this community. Last year at the Safe at School Board Meeting, it was stated that we could not run the building with about three adult staff members missing. We have consistently been killing ourselves running these buildings with five to eight, miss, staff members out, and no subs since last spring. We cannot keep up at this pace. You are burning out your staff. When we get pulled to cover other classes and other grades, or even specials, that mean we don't get time to prepare for our own lessons. This time has come from somewhere else in order to do our jobs and keep up with our own curriculum. Which means for most of us, this comes from our time at home on nights and weekends. We already do the bulk of our grading and, and looking at student assessment work to adjust our teaching practices during that time. So now we get even less time for other things like eating meals with our children, attending athletic or community events, and even just getting a little bit of greatly needed downtime to pursue our interests outside of our careers. Currently, it is not possible to get a work-life balance because of the chaos in our schools. Staff that have been out, have not been, have just not been parents with quarantined kids, they have been staff that are truly sick, staff that have appointments, or just plain need a mental health day. Most of the staff I know with children have found a way to teach, even when they have kids of their own in quarantine. So this is not the full problem. We do not have a staffing issue, we have a subbing issue. When you cannot take a sick day because you are aware of the stress it causes your teammates or coworkers, or you end up working from home because you don't know that you won't be able to keep up with what you are teaching tomorrow, there is a subbing problem. I want to thank you all for the work you do, I know it is a difficult position you have been put in dealing with this situation. We are all well aware of the pressures you feel to make everyone happy, which just isn't possible. At the end of the day, I ask that you please keep your staff in mind throughout your discussions. We love our jobs and the kids we teach, but we need to provide for the safety and well-being of everyone involved. And this is from Amy Young, she is a fifth-grade teacher, science and social studies in our middle school. And I also have one more that I would like to read. Dear Superintendent Dr. Aslan and members of the board, on behalf of the majority of the Spooner High School staff, we would like to address the events of the special board meeting held on September 28th in the Spooner High School auditorium. During the community comments section of the meeting, there were allegations made about staff members being too afraid to speak up in fear of reprimand from administration. We, as staff, feel it is imperative to clarify that this is not the case. Rather, staff is concerned with the possible repercussions and potential response from the members of our community and guardians of our students. As we all know, the topic of COVID-19 and all associated regulations have been brought various perspectives and opinions. In the past, other topics brought before the board have allowed for the sharing or differing of opinions without political backlash. However, staff members are hesitant to speak on our current situation in fear of our comments being misconstrued, which could reflect poorly on our professional positions within the district. The staff members of the Spooner High School work very hard to keep our personal opinions and beliefs out of the classroom, and always strive to act in the best interest of our students, regardless of the political atmosphere encompassing our district. Our focus as a staff is to do what is best for the education of our students. Our desire is that the students are in our classrooms, where studies have shown they learn best. However, with staffing shortages, it is proving difficult to maintain the quality of education our students deserve. We feel that our administration is working to find the best solutions for the staff and for students of Spooner schools. But as we observed last week, there are many layers to this process. This is not a decision that can be made easily, and it requires all of us to work together to determine the best option for our students' success. A process with, a process such as this requires exemplary leadership from all levels of our community. The example set at the special board meeting on September 28th was not the behavior we want modeled for our students. The focus of the meeting should have been on what is truly best for the students' learning, which was negatively impacted as a result of the actions from board members and community members alike. The conduct portrayed at the meeting from all parties did not meet the very expectation we place on our students within our classrooms. Our students deserve better, our students deserve a community that is willing to work together to consider possible solutions for our current situation. We do not have an answer, we do not believe there is one sole solution to the problems we are facing. We do know, however, that disrespect and lack of procedure is not the way to find one. We ask that you, the board, and the community consider how your actions impact our student body going forward, and hopefully, we can all work together to find a solution.
I appreciate you reading those. And, uh, past practice was we were not reading emails. I see that that's a new practice. And I could tell you, I have about twenty I'd like to read tonight, but I'm not going to. But I will be prepared for our next meeting to be, be reading emails, so that we have all the emails read that are not able to be here, if that's the practice we're going to go with. You had a point?
It says anonymous on there, I believe it came from the staff of the Spooner High School. Okay.
Step up to the mic, please.
And please state your name.
Hi, my name is Missy Weinberg in, uh, Towne Evergreen. I have one student in elementary school and one in the middle school. I have recently spoken to the superintendent in the Barron County, uh, one of the Barron County schools- Barron County, one of the Barron County school districts, for clarification on how they're handling the contact tracing. All the superintendents in the Barron County have met and agreed with how they are handling the current situation. They're not having their school staff work directly with the DHS office, as in, they're not going in and measuring six feet. They are legally obligated to answer the DHS questions, but DHS is working with the positive children's parents to find out who their child sits by. If a parent is unable to answer the question, then DHS will contact the school for help. If there is a weak delay in finding the exposed students, DHS has often told the classroom to be aware and does not send anyone home, but advises the family to be aware of their positive exposure. Our nurses should be not responsible for hunting down each person exposed and contacting the parents and sending them home. Make DHS do this. They can make the calls at all hours in the night and not our nurses. If we put contact tracing back in the hands of DHS, the students and the students' families, and give the nurses the ability to actually test our kids who may be sick and be proactive by removing them from the school sooner than later, and running the rest of exposing more students while waiting on test results, and helps get our kids, healthy kids, back into school faster than they have a negative test after three days and go back to school. If DHS wants to measure who is within three to six feet of each other, let them in and measure themselves. This is not our nurses' jobs. If we eliminate the, I'm sorry. If we eliminate our nurses from doing DHS's jobs and only assist by answering questions parents cannot, then we have freed up several hours that are important on a daily basis for these staff members and what their role should be in with our students. I am so frustrated also with the board's actions last week. When Nathaniel made a motion to stop contact tracing, only him and Michelle spoke up about how they felt on the situation. A board is meant to state their opinions and beliefs. No one else did that. How can you just vote no on something that you won't discuss, your side of the arguments, so on, so people can hear your concerns and understand your beliefs? By not saying anything, you appear to the public that you have your own agenda in mind. I would rather hear your opinion and not agree with it, and, than not hear anything at all. All that does is make me think you are, you are only here to approve what is recommended by administration and not taking into consideration other parents' thoughts on the matter. Being on board is not an easy job, or is it meant to be. It meant, it's meant to do the best interest of the majority of the people by educated and common sense decisions. Common sense tells me not to quarantine those that are healthy, but that's my opinion. I want to hear your belief, not just, not just have you approve one recommended, one recommendation that was made. Currently, there are no health mandates, only recommendations, so what DHS says to do are only their opinions and not laws. This does not mean people have to wear masks. They do not have to quarantine if they are healthy. They recommend getting a COVID vaccine, but it's not law. These decisions are meant to be left up to the people and the parents and of the students that are affected. One last point, by turning the school virtual for three weeks, what is it being accomplished? Can you tell me how many parents are able to stay at home with their elementary-age students for more than three, for three weeks? Their older siblings can't watch them because they're supposed to be virtual learning as well. So unless you are ready to quit your job, or take a leave of absence, and stay home with my child, you better come up with a plan that puts us back on DHS solely, and responsible for handling these COVID cases. The other thing out of this is there is no more federal money out there for people staying home because of COVID. It expired September 30th, so if you close that school for three weeks, they're not getting any money. They have to use their vacation or their sick time, if they have any left. It's October, most people don't have it anymore. They spent it during the summer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Justine Swanson. So, this is just like my thoughts after the last school board meeting, and, from what I gathered. So, school board, what is it going to take for our voices to finally be heard? We are all so sick and tired of being terrified every time we see the nurse walk into a classroom, or every time our teachers' phones ring. We are sick of struggling to comprehend even the subjects that aren't extremely difficult, because the only option we have while quarantined is to watch our teachers on a screen and look at documents and packets. You can't ask face-to-face questions, point out exactly what part of a problem you are confused on, or simply clarify that you are struggling. We all came into this year so hopeful for a fresh start, so hopeful to bring back those traditions that alumni got to participate in, and even some of your own children. How can you state that it's best for us to sit and try to learn behind a computer screen when none of you up there that have kids who have graduated have had to sit through that struggle, or might not have kids at all, for others? How can you say that we could truly be safer not participating in the things that make us happiest? When you think back to your high school years, I bet that you believe that those were truly the best years of your life. How are you supposed to feel confident with this decision when it truly makes us believe that these could be the complete opposite for us, in fact, the worst? I feel that a lot of you went into the last board meeting with a preconceived decision about how you were going to vote, and even after hearing the parents of us, and even directly from the students, you chose to ignore all the very relevant and good points that were made, instead of choosing to really take a deeper look into the other side. I am an incredibly positive person. Anyone can tell you that, whether it's a student, a teacher, or even a coach. I am an active member of Student Council Spirit Club, and I am a link leader for our new freshmen as they change over into the high school. But let me tell you what, I have never been more depressed than I was each time I got quarantined, and each time I had to miss a sporting event because I was quarantined. Simply enough, watching things on a screen doesn't have near the same effect. I know kids personally who, ever since quarantine began, have absolutely no interest in going to school, and it's really bad when that disinterest carries over into social events that they don't even care to participate in outside of school. I also have younger cousins that are struggling with going to school, so this is not just a high school feeling. I am so incredibly glad that the two people stood up and heard what we were truly saying and adjourned the meeting so that we could have another chance at voicing our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tiffany Johnson. I have two kids at the high school, one of which has been quarantined probably half of the school year. Not sick, I take that back. Two days he was sick, waiting on testing. This last time, not sick. And I, my question is for Dr. Aslan. Is there any numbers, any data showing student grades or achievement in the times this, last year, year and a half? Like, how, how has it affected students' grades being home? My son was home four times last year. This is the first time this year, when he started, we homeschooled till eighth grade, kind of having second thoughts at this point. Freshman year, he, As, Bs, a few Cs. Start of that freshman, or end of that freshman year is when all of this started. Grades are tanking. He, he's got several, probably 15 missing assignments in Biology II class, because he's been home. Half of that time home, there was no TVs for him, no, no, no computer access packets. How do you learn Biology II without your teacher, from a packet? When I'm working full-time, I can't help him. So, my question is, all the quarantining for him, being, all three, all three times last year, he was healthy, home, quarantining. Thankfully, the teachers worked with him when he came back to get his grades back up. This time, he was just getting set to help, get help from the two days he missed, and then he was sent home again. Now, if you guys go virtual again, he's supposed to be going in, rails time to get help, to get caught back up on tests and labs that he can't do at home. And if we go virtual again, he'll probably end up having to fail that class because of that. So, is there any numbers? I mean, how is this affecting students' grades? Because that's...
Good question, and yes, there are some numbers. Anecdotally, so, nothing over a long period of time, just our own study within the district, I can tell you that the number of grades of F in the high school were pretty similar during the, when we weren't in school than they were prior to, okay? That was not the case in the middle school. I think more middle school students struggled grade-wise, and we did see an uptick in that. So, because COVID's fairly new, there's not a depth of research, but I think the research that's out there would say, this is, this is not an enhancer for kids' grades over time. That there, there, there are some students that really thrive in that virtual-only environment, and it's not a large group of students. And the educational experience is made up more of just coursework, and some of that is lost when students have to be virtual over an extended period of time. And I have to tell you, right now, that's, we're just, we're not pursuing that virtual piece, so, that's what I can tell you, ma'am.
My other question is, I had heard if we go virtual, that they're still going to continue to do sporting events. My kids play sports. I, I agree, sports are good. There's great things from it. But if we're getting our kids home virtual, which is not, in my opinion, good for their quality of education, how are we going to help the COVID situation if they're still doing sporting events and practices and things? And isn't that putting sports over education, which should not be the focus? Sports are addition to education. They are not, they are not what you're mainly in school for, you know? That's not gonna... So, is that true?
Yep. So, so, you know, again, not, not looking to do widespread virtual now. That, that recommendation didn't, didn't get a motion and a second and a vote by the board, okay? The, yes, the, the element of that plan that was presented did have sporting events continuing. Almost all the sports that are fall sports are outside sports, so students are able to put distance between and mitigation procedures. And the one that's an indoor sport, again, you're in a, you're in a large facility where you can put space in between. So, not, not putting sports over athletics, again, trying to provide that total educational experience for students. So that's, that's it. But again, that's, the move to three weeks of virtual is just not what's on the table tonight. That's, that's not a, not a recommendation or an action item on the board's agenda.
I would like to just end by asking board members to consider the education of the kids in this six-foot quarantining. Like I said, my son's been quarantined probably five times total in the last year and a half, because of contact tracing, whatever, sitting too close to someone who's positive. And I'd like you to consider that when you're thinking about this contact tracing thing, about how it's affecting students' education, if they're not, I mean, like I said, he hasn't had COVID. He's been home all those times, not sick, so.
Thank you. Ma'am, will you please step up to the microphone and state your name, please?
My name is Tracy Osterhues. I have one child in the school district, a senior right now. He is just getting off his 14-day healthy quarantine, because that's what I'm going to call it. He was not sick the whole time. But he did miss three important soccer games in his career as a senior, that was very depressing for him. As we all know, that the soccer team is on a historical run right now, and he's a major player on that team, along with all of his other students that are. And he's the only one that was out because of this tracing. I don't understand it, because in the elementary school, there is no tracing, and you just take the whole class out, but you are tracing in the high school, so you're not even keeping up with your own rules. So either there's tracing or there's not tracing. You shouldn't be picking and choosing. You have said that there will be no rallies this week for homecoming, which again, is very important for our student bodies' mental health. I had suggested, and the kids have suggested, about going outside and doing this, and you said, oh, that's not possible, because we can't contact trace. Well, I think you can make an exception if you can't contract trace in the elementary. And I'm not even sure about why that contract tracing is being done. You're not even trying to make a six-feet difference. My son is in a class where he has three to a table that's only supposed to have two to a table. So, when my daughter was in school, and I wanted to put her in a class where there was no room, I was told, too bad, so sad, that class is full. But from my understanding, two tables were added to this classroom. And they were told they couldn't do some type of dissection because there was no room, because there were too many students. So, I had suggested, last week on the Face page, that maybe you should be taking some of your classes outside. That, we used to do that all the time. I went to Spooner High School. Anyone remember Mr. Snell? He was the principal. And guess what? For lunches, you weren't even allowed inside. He would come down the hallway yelling, everybody outside, everybody outside. I don't know what has changed, but we all know being outside is healthy. You're going to get vitamin D, you're going to get sun. The mental illness will help with the sun and the kids being outside. You say we have a good student body, so I think they are capable of being outside. I would assume it would be huge just to say, hey, if you don't behave, you're going to go back inside. So, I would really like your teachers to take that on. I will say, thank you to the teacher that that class, my son has, did take their student body outside. My son was doing the virtual class this week, and he came downstairs and said, hey, guess what? I'm out of class right now because my teacher said we're only reading, and she's taking her class outside. Thank you, Mrs. O. Other classes can do that. I'm sure that the teachers are smart enough to know what curriculum they can teach outside. If they have to come in for a half hour at the beginning of class, they teach it. And then whatever they do for the rest of the time, these are hour-and-a-half blocks for the high school at this point. I understand there's probably some difficulty in middle school and elementary. Please brainstorm, instead of just come up with these simple solutions that you think you have. There is more that you can think of outside the box for these kids than just closing the school or doing whatever you want. But you're not helping the situation when you can't even provide a six-foot space in these classes for our children. I also want to say that, last week, I think it was Mr. Johnson said, sorry, that we are not only here for the students, but we have to think about the community. That is not what it says in what your responsibility is. Your responsibility as a school board is to look after our children and our children's education. Our community can take care of themselves. There is a shot out right now that is their security. They can get that shot. So you're responsible to take care of yourself. If you're in the community, your job is to take care of our students and their education. I don't appreciate you reading two letters, one of them anonymous, from someone who you agree with. If you're going to bring two letters that don't agree with the rest of us, you need to bring letters that agree with the rest of us. I don't think you should have any anonymous letters, because I can tell you right now, I have friends that are teachers who do not think that they can speak because of this administration. I'm sure they'd be happy to do anonymous letters that you can read for them. I don't think that was appropriate that you did that tonight. And I would really like you to care about the mental health of our students. Mental health is just as important as physical health. Mental health also leads to deaths. And I'm sick of everyone ignoring that fact. Mental health, I can tell you, anyone that has depression would tell you they'd rather be sick from, if you have the shot, you're just going to get sick if you're an older person. If you are a younger person, not even that sick. But the mental health that you are doing to our children is disingenuous. That is ridiculous. They will tell you, I'd rather be myself sick for two weeks than to have mental health for the rest of my life, or even for a longer period of time. You can't ignore this. And I don't want you to tell me how you're worried about your community, your neighbor, your friend. Tell me if you're worried about yourself, because that's what it is. Everyone else can speak for themselves. And I want to make a point about virtual learning. This will be my last point. Last week, I heard many of the administrators get up here and say, or I'm sorry, principals, and say how you guys know how to do this, it's worked. Please, Melton was right. My son... My son headed off, is teaching, is listening, and then doing something else over here, 15 minutes? What aren't you doing in class anymore, Chase? It's, the class is over. How can the class be over? If you were in school, it'd be an hour and a half. But guess what? His classes were 20 minutes. The kids were doing something else that obviously he didn't need to be online for. I don't know what the teacher was doing in the other hour and a half. It doesn't work. You can sit here and say how great it was and how you know how to do it. I don't care you know how to do it. Is my kid benefiting from it at all? They are not. And we cannot control what our kid is doing on that virtual when we are working or in another room, not babysitting my 16-year-old. But let's put some of it on the staff also, who weren't teaching the whole hour and a half. I don't know what they were doing. Maybe, again, they just needed to read, so there's no reason for him to be on, and I get that. But let's not say that it worked, when we all as parents know it did not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't really prepare for anything today, but I would like to say how I feel about some certain things. I have a couple of questions for Mrs. Hamilton. I don't know if she's able to answer those at this time. I was gonna ask you guys if I could get a couple answers from her at this time?
She could ask some questions.
Sure, sure. So what I have understood from other students who do have the vaccine in the district have been asked to mask up and have been required to mask up, is that correct? That they have been required to mask up?
If they have the vaccine?
Yeah.
If they, so if they are a close contact, we've asked them to mask up?
I can't hear Mrs. Hamilton.
Mrs. Hamilton, yeah.
Was it on heal? Okay, so yes, there we go. Students who are a close contact to a positive who are vaccinated, so the recommendation for students who are close contact to a positive who are vaccinated is that on days three through five, following exposure, they get a COVID test. And after they get the results of the negative COVID test, then they would discontinue mask wearing, or they would wear a mask through day 14.
Okay, so just for that clarification, as she had stated before I had asked my question, she had said that we couldn't do contact tracing three feet, because you couldn't pay attention to who is wearing their mask and who is not, if it is not mandated. How are you supposed to make the kids who are vaccinated wear masks when you can't even tell if they're wearing masks or not? So what, from my, from my understanding, this, like, way you're saying things, like, makes no sense, you're contradicting the other. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't think I need my microphone. Why is it...
Ma'am, if you would please stand, come to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Dawn Menard. I have a son in the school district. Why is it with the HIPAA laws as they currently are, that anyone has any understanding who does or does not have a vaccine? That's illegal. Why is that happening?
It's not easy to protect that information.
It's a health privacy information.
Can I ask for that?
Yes, please.
I, I believe that nobody is required to indicate whether they have or have not. If they opt to provide that information, that would be fine, but at this point, I'm not aware of anyone that's ever been asked to...
Then how come we're having a discussion that your nurse here is telling us that if someone's vaccinated or not vac, how they have to wear a mask regarding vaccinations? Why is that happening?
Do you want me to explain that?
I don't believe that people are required to disclose anything. If they don't wanna disclose, if they don't wanna disclose it, they don't have to disclose it.
So DA, do you want me to explain that?
Go ahead, Mrs. Hamilton.
I just didn't, no, please, sorry. So, do you want...
Can you hold that mic up closer to your mouth?
Either that or come stand up here in the middle, so that we can...
Okay. So, just as with other vaccines, those required for school vaccines, we are allowed to access that information. DHS told us that for the COVID vaccine, we're allowed to verify if students are vaccinated or not, so that's per DHS. There was a great deal of discussion about that at the beginning of the school year, and it wasn't clarified until right at the start of the school year. So that is okay. What we did at Spooner, before we knew if students, if we would be able to access that information or not, we asked families to disclose if they wanted to, if their students were vaccinated. So it was offered as an optional, here's what you can do. And so families who have checked, "No, I don't want you accessing those records," when we do go through and we have to check and see if students are vaccinated, I check to see if that box is checked. And if a family has indicated they don't want that information accessed, then we don't access it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Do you want to say vaccinated?
Sure. Andrew Melton.
Okay.
First of all, I just, I wanna say thank you.
Do you want any questions?
You don't have to be. I want you to know, if you've ever felt personally attacked from me, that I apologize publicly. I thank you for your doing a great job, Sarah. You're doing exactly what you've been told to do. And you can tell by all the numbers you have, you're doing it exactly. You take a tape measure, it's gonna be six feet, you do exactly six feet. So I want the public to take the pressure off of our nurse. It's not her responsibility. She's doing exactly what she's been told. And so, thank you for doing that. But I also wanna take some pressure off of you. You mentioned having 16 hours a day doing that stuff, and you could see it on you. And so I am gonna highly recommend, again to the board, to remove that from one person. It's been a lot of pressure for one person to carry that weight, and I apologize that you've had to do that. Again, it is a recommendation with the quarantine. And to build, give the parents that are concerned about COVID, when their kid's being exposed, you notify them and say that there was an exposure in your class, and they have that option to bring their child home. And so, we talked about wanting the kids in here, want to work together as a community, and I wanna see that. I don't want people raising their voices and stuff and getting on each other. So that, to me, seems like a good compromise. If a family's super concerned about it, they can quarantine their child. Now, understand, there's some staff saying that they might not be able to do that. I'm okay with being flexible. If that staff says there was somebody in their classroom that had it, and they would need to quarantine, quarantine, protect them. I feel sorry for Amy Young, if she's listening tonight. I'm sorry for what you're going through. That is tough, living every day that way, worried about that. I love the idea that you're talking about raising the substitute priced $150 for this year. I think it's a great recommendation, maybe it's $200. I think it's worth the investment of this community to have our kids in school. And we can continue to say staffing is the issue. And so, I think that's a great idea. So I would highly recommend you guys to do that. I appreciate our administration here. The principals are busting their butt, the teachers are busting their butt, parents are busting their butt at work and trying to do that as well, they're trying to juggle things. I appreciate the students being brave enough to come up and share. That's a tough thing to do. Our English teachers are doing a good job, teaching them how to prepare and talk publicly, apparently. But the, the kids are sharing with you. They're asking, they're begging you to let them come to school. And I mentioned it last week, it's a crazy season of life, because we've never had that before, where so many kids wanna be in school. And so I think you're coming together as a community and saying, "Yeah, we didn't know what it was like last year. We took precautions, we're taking precautions this year, but start taking the weight off." One of the students mentioned it, felt like it was a new, fresh start this year. Last week, we talked about 41 active cases, and that's a lot, and I feel bad for everyone that's been sick. And, and it was a big uprising. What are we gonna do? We have to shut the school down, we have 15 active cases just a week later. And a month from now, get it by Christmas, it could go back up again. But let's just start walking this out with some balance. Again, I would highly suggest, somebody from the board, make a motion to carry this over to the agenda, to build a vote to stop quarantining kids from close contact. Mentioned last week, if somebody's sick, you can require them to quarantine. Well, the teacher said that they still send their kids to school. If they're sick, then yeah. Love for other people would be stay home until you're, you're done with that. So again, the numbers, to me, are insane, that we have had 108 kids, which is high. About 891 kids out of school this year? And that's, same kid could be multiple times, could be three or four times like last year. That's insane. So let's work together to get them in here. And again, the staffing, I mentioned it already, encourage those substitutes to get here. A little extra incentive for this year would be great. And protect the staff that need to be protected, protect the kids. But I would, again, this is my last point, and this is from your guys' Safe Fit school plan, so it is your plan, because we mentioned that last week. I don't have my glasses, maybe I won't be able to read it, but... Supporting the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students and staff. That is one of your goals. That's why I'm asking, just follow your goals. And I shared last week, we're not gonna do it again, there is kids that are struggling with this. I personally dealt with those kids. And I'm just begging you, I'm begging you, to try to get those kids in here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have, do we have any other comments at this time? Okay, one moment, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hi, everybody, I'm Johnna Klein. I sent an email to all of you, and if you had a chance to read it, I appreciate that. Just reiterating some comments that were made on my behalf, since I was keeping score at the volleyball game at the prior meeting. But I know that the District of Unity, it's a very similar-sized district to us. I think we have 238 more students, according to the data on the internet. And they are, they, they are in Polk County. I realize Washburn is not Polk, but I wondered if it's just another opportunity to see another way that's, a similar district is doing things. Polk County has provided DHS workers, well, it's through DHS, I assume they're probably trained in the medical field in some way, anyway, to staff a clinic on the grounds of Unity School. And they gave Unity a choice. How many days do you want us here? What hours would you like us to be here? Their nurse is on maternity leave, and I spoke to Rachel, who is the nurse who is filling in and going to be covering that maternity leave. And she filled me in on exactly how that process happened, and I just don't know, I don't know if Washburn County can do that. So they've given the parents the choice. They don't measure anything. Like, if a student has COVID, they let the parents know via an automatic call, so it's not her calling every parent. You know, your child is a close contact. If they are asymptomatic, we would like to offer you the choice. If you want them to quarantine, that's okay. If you would rather have them in school, that's fine with us, as long as they're asymptomatic. And we have an opportunity in our building for them to be tested if you would like. A girlfriend of mine, who is a teacher there, said she had a COVID case in her class, and so people had the choice. And most of her kids came to school. And then I think she said two of the kids, their families felt more comfortable having them tested the rapid test every day, and they could do that for free. And when they found out the result, then there's a quarantine room, so you hang out in the quarantine room for X amount of minutes, doing your stuff online, just like, you know, we can do from home or whatever. And then if they have a, obviously, a positive result, they go home. But if they have a negative result, then they can go to their classroom and feel like they have a clear conscience of what they're choosing to do. Also, my friend is the principal, Jason Hines, at Turtle Lake High School, and they have adopted a similar, I don't know if they have COVID testing available, but they are allowing parents to make the choice, as far as if your close contact is in school, or if they're quarantined. And if it's working other places, I just would ask that we would look at some of those out of the box, or out of our Spooner box possibilities. And like I said, I know we're not Polk County, and I don't know what we can be offered, as far as, like, Andrew and other people have said, I commend Sarah, I've begged her before, "Don't quit, don't quit, don't quit." Because she's a great person, and she's very capable in her job, but she doesn't have time to do her job, because she's running around with the tape measure and her phone, probably two phones going at once. And she's called me late at night last year and this year to let me know my kids' situations. So I just, it, it, it's, it's working other places. And I asked Rachel at Unity, "Well, how did, how's your community taking this, the new way of doing things?" And she said, "Well, you know, we have people on both sides," which is gonna happen everywhere. So, I don't know, there are other ways.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please, step to the microphone and state your name, please.
I'm finally gonna cry, but my name is Cindy O'Connell. I've been here for three weeks in a row, and I ask you guys, we had so many speakers, and you just blow us off and don't listen to us. I pray to God you listen to us. I paid taxes for 30 years in this district. I don't have kids here, and I pay them twice. I should have a voice, and you guys should listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if...
I'd like to make a point of order. I don't believe at a public meeting you can read an anonymous letter or email. So I'm making a point of order, and I'm also asking for a copy of that be submitted to the public record of this meeting. If it is emailed, then it's open to public records, and it has to be stated as who wrote the email. Thank you for that point of order.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Melton.
Deb?
Yes?
Could I respond? One of the comments was directed towards me specifically, and may I respond to that?
Sure.
I'd like to say that, first of all, I do read all the emails that I receive, and I try to respond to all of them. If somebody sends me an email the day of the meeting, you might not get a response for a few days, but I would love to have spoken at the last meeting, told everybody how I felt, but I was not given the chance. It was a pretty one-sided conversation, I felt, because we didn't get a chance to actually have the board have the discussion. As far as my statement, as far as the community comments, my statement was that, as a school board member, I feel that it is not our role to decide health decisions for our community. I specifically said that this is not our role, this is not what we should be working on, but this is what we are being forced to do, because there has been no leadership up above us since March of last year. We've gone through 18 months of this. Every one of us has been picking up bits and pieces of how we feel, what we read, personal experiences. So there's a lot of reasons behind the way we vote, but the reason, I said last week, I've made that comment, is because I agree with you, that is not our role. But that's the role that, for some reason, we've been put into, because every leader above us that's attempted to get this under control and set guidelines or even laws, has been challenged. So here we are, down at the lowest level, at the local level, a school board having to make healthcare decisions, and I think it's wrong. I agree with you. Thank you for speaking tonight.
Okay, so, yes, Mr. Melton?
Since this is on the topic, is this gonna be addressed tonight?
What do you have?
Is that part of the nurses' conversation, or is that part of this conversation? Or is that a...
It's, I think it is part of the, the meeting topic of what you'll do with COVID going forward. And in that communication, you see that the Washburn County Public Health Officer has provided, provided a method that she'll look for board members to communicate with her going forward, and that's what it is.
Thank, thank you.
Can I make a motion at this time to move it to...
Yes, do you have a specific motion, Mrs. Jepson?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to move to our regular board meeting to stop contact tracing the way we are doing it, and allow parents to make the decision when we send out a... and allow parents to make the decision when we send out a phone call or an email or what we have done in the past, till everyone know what's going on.
Okay, so you are specifically asking that we stop contact tracing the way it is being performed at this time? And how do you, how do you propose that that would be?
If a, there is a positive in a classroom, all the students in that classroom's parents should be given a call and/or an email, and they can make the decision if they want their child to be in school, out of school, as long as they have no symptoms.
Did you get that out, Jessie? Okay, all right.
Asymptomatic, is that the word, asymptomatic?
Do, do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Do we need to amend our Safe at School Plan? Since we have the health procedures outlined in the plan, and we're asking to change those health procedures? What is the appropriate course of action?
Dr. Aslan, will you fill that one, please?
Yep, I will, I will fill that one. So, yeah, I think, you know, miss, what Mrs. Jebson has laid out to move forward, I, you know, has, is specific enough that I think you can consider that as a, as a school board. If you were to vote in favor of that aboard, as a board, then this plan would have to be amended based on, on what you.
On the results of the, on that motion.
Okay, so, um, do we have a consent?
I, I second if it needs second.
It does not need to be second. We just have to have a consensus to move it to the regular board meeting. So can we please, everybody move down the line and say yes or no if you have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
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 All right.
Can I say yes? Thank you for skipping over me.
Thank you, sorry.
I know I don't speak much, but I'd like to at least have a chance. Thank you very much.
I can't see you.
No problem.
All right, so, we're moving on then to item J of the, of the, um, agenda, the thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning cycle. And I'm assuming that all of you have been able to review that. And time to go over, is there any questions? Nope? All right, if there is not any questions, um, we are going to receive and place that on file. All right, and now we're moving on to item K, which is the financial update. Dr. Aslan?
This is a financial update for August of 2021. Uh, as you can see, there were some pretty significant receipts during the course of August. Uh, and among those significant receipts were Gears funding, which, again, as we discussed in the spring, was Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. Uh, money coming from flow-through, and that is for special education services. The CLC grant hit, and again, that's the Community Learning Center, and that is before and after-school programming. And finally, the August tax settlement. So, end of August, total amount, uh, on hand was nine million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Expenditures were, uh, one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, uh, one million, one hundred and thirty, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand and eighty-four cents. So, uh, cash on hand at the end of the month, eight million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Any questions? All right, if there are no questions, we are going to receive and place that on file. And we're moving on to item L, approval of vouchers. Everyone had a chance to look over. Do you have any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay, do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Megan, did you say?
I did.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving to item three, which is the discussion and action portion of this meeting. And tonight, there are a couple of discussion and action items that we do need to take care of. Item A is consider the referendum construction project furniture purchase. Dr. Aslan?
Uh, so Mr. Conkle had presented a concept to you about, um, sticking with school specialties. Is their proprietary, um, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment match what we already have in the schools? What he has given you, um, Corey Peterson from School Specialties Proposal, these are not-to-exceed figures, and they are certainly well within what's been budgeted for those, uh, those pieces of furniture in the referendum construction budget.
Is there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve the referendum construction project furniture purchase.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Jessie, or discussion? Anybody? No? Roll call vote, Jessie?
Carrie Assonson?
Yes.
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 All right. Motion is approved. And the next item is item B. Um, we have a couple of personnel recommendations that we need to take care of this evening. Dr. Aslan?
So first, two resignations. Riley Hotchkiss, middle school basketball coach, two years of service. Christina Davidson, paraprofessional, entered first year of service here in the district.
Do I have a motion to approve these resignations?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Um, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your service to the district. We really appreciate it. And we're, have some hirings this evening.
So, uh, a significant hire after a, a pretty significant loss on Mrs. Baker as the food service supervisor. So the recommendation is, uh, for Melanie Melgar to be the food service manager, and, uh, I am the recommending administrator on that.
All right, a motion to approve this hiring?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. Thank you very much, and welcome to the district. All right, item number four, I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.